Let's pray. Your gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this opportunity we have as a community to come together and go about the business of the city of Concordia. Father, I pray for the representatives here who are doing their duty tonight, and I just pray for wisdom for the decisions that are made here. I pray for everybody in this community that we would learn to get along well with each other, that we would honor you with the way that we behave toward one another, and that all glory and honor would go to your name from this meeting tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the rightly protected citizens, one nation, in the name of this law, and one of the highest justices in history. What are the changes to the agenda?
Yes, if I could to schedule a study session on wage study to the budget study session if we could please. Had some events happen this weekend, I wasn't able to get that done for you.
I need to add this.
You wanted to add it to the August meeting?
The delegates.
Oh, I don't care. I already put it down for tonight. We can do it through me. Okay, I missed today. Well, so we could add this. This would be designate the voting delegates for the league annual conference, which is in October. If you guys are ready to decide who wants to go to that conference, if they're not ready to decide, then we can wait for that on the August agenda. So that's up to you.
I think late. October's long. Probably not as far as it should be.
Just to have a little study session. To the first budget study session and move to approve the agenda as amended.
Been moved by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Belden to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. It's now time for public comments. This is a time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. We request that you state your name and address, speaker respectfully, and launch your comments at three minutes. Hearing that, we'll move on to proclamation. The public hearing.
We'll go through these one at a time here.
We're going to open the public.
Nope, we're gonna do each one, then we'll open the public. I'll just give a brief history memo there on each one, and then we'll open the public hearing. Sometimes you should go pretty quick here. All these are starting the process of confirmation. We started with the public hearing notices about forty days ago. But first one, 102 Kansas, this is an accessory structure that's just slowly deteriorating. It's got a hole in the roof. So I started it on this, and it actually was a house at one time, and the owner has actually contacted me and started the process of cleaning it up and mowing around it. He tore the porch off of it that was falling down. He's got some ideas for it on either removing it or fixing it up to use for storage, which is fine either way. So, but basically, since he started, I recommend that just on the resolution, we just say zero days. And with that, you can open the public hearing on this, and I imagine it'll probably close pretty quick unless somebody's here on 102 Kansas. So go ahead and open the public hearing.
We'll open the public hearing on 102 Kansas.
Anybody have any comments on 102 Kansas? I don't think so. It seems closed public hearing.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing on 102 Kansas.
Do we do these resolutions, Stacy, as we go? Or should we wait till the end?
No, I wasn't aware you were gonna do this. I didn't know you were gonna do all the public hearings separately, so maybe it's better to do the resolutions.
As we go.
As we go. I think that'd be easier from a minute standpoint to keep that.
Okay, so Resolution 2023-2154 is 102 Kansas, which basically just says that he has to start the repair or removal of that within zero days, like he's already started. So and then he has to diligently pursue it until it's complete. So that's where my job comes in, keep an eye on things.
I move to.
I recommend you approve.
I move to approve Resolution 2023-2154. Second.
Then motion has been made by Commissioner Hutchinson, seconded by Commissioner Belden to approve Resolution 2023-2154. Any discussion? Not those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Move on to 119.
119 Washington. This one's been deteriorating slowly now. I notice when we've done a couple of abatements on this over the years, I've sent certified letters, no response. Several years back taxes on it, and it's falling apart, hole in the roof, string over morning lawn, so we can open the public hearing on that now, and I don't think there's anybody here. I haven't gotten any calls. Certified letter came back unsigned.
There's no comments. We'll close the public hearing.
On this one, zero days, and that will give me, I made a comment on a couple of other ones that this give me, I can get started on putting out demo bids on these ones that are zero days. I can get started right away, so.
So how is that? Oh, okay, yeah. The first one, he'd already started and worked on.
Yes.
Okay.
And this one here, I'm probably gonna, well, we have to wait, but then I get this along with others coming for down bids, advertising for bids. So with that, we got Resolution 2023-2155.
I would move to approve Resolution 2023-2155. Second.
Been moved by Commissioner Belden, second by Commissioner Jackson, sorry, to approve Resolution 2023-2155. Any discussion? Not those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, second. Move on to.
218 West First Street, same thing. Been vacant forever, no utilities, many, many nuisance abatements on this. And it's falling apart. I noticed the porch is falling down. There's, sorry, say without going on the property, but this one needs to be fixed or taken down and know if there's been, there's back taxes on it, and they'll return on the certified letter. That's why I got zero days on this and start the process of removal and repair, and allow me to get requests for demolition bids. So we don't public hearing on this.
Any comments? If not, we'll close the public hearing.
This is Resolution 2023-2156.
I move to approve Resolution 2023-2156. Second.
Been moved by Commissioner Hutchinson, seconded by Commissioner Jackson to approve Resolution 2023-2158-56. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed. Move on to public hearing for 315 West Third Street.
Same thing here. It's severely damaged by fire. I think it may have last year, and it's it has been cleaned up a little bit, some of the fire damage, but it's still uninhabitable, and it's having a tremendous play on neighborhood. But this one's kind of unique because it's a non-legal, non-conforming use, which means it's a use that's not allowed for the zoning district. It's industrial zone, and it's a residential house. And when you have a legal, non-conforming use by our zoning rules, if it's damaged by more than fifty percent of its fair market value, then it can't come back unless it conforms to the zoning. So the only options the owner has on this one is to either change the zoning to residential zoning and fix the house back up or have it removed. And then it's an industrial lot, which is what the whole block is anyway, so.
Okay, how do we change that then?
To change the zoning?
Yeah.
Is this 315 West Third?
Yeah.
All right.
Can we, can we open the public?
We need to open the public hearing. Come on. Are you the owner?
She's the owner.
Commissioner, could you please stay? Yeah.
It's open.
Yeah, we open.
Can we sell this property?
Sure you can sell it.
Why don't I own it? I'm on First Street, anyway.
I can't live there anywhere because there's no gas or light. I don't know.
You want, you want more days to make a decision? I've got zero days.
I'm not sure enough for some people about buying it, but I don't know what. I'm thinking the lot. Somebody wanted the lot to store their trailers on. I think it's tough.
That would take a different kinds of money, too.
I like that you're gonna do that. You mean zoning.
The zoning, the use has to meet the zoning. So you got a single family dwelling on an industrial lot, which is a legal non-conforming use, so. But anyway, I've got on this one zero days. If you need time to make a decision, we can increase that.
Because we have somebody.
But this is a legal, non-conforming use, and it either has to come back as an industrial use, or the zoning has to change if it wants to come back to the single family block. Yeah, and, and now the disclosure is there, so the process can continue now that we've had the public hearing. But if the property was sold before that, we'd have stopped the process, which we're doing.
So how much time does she have, like to fix it or?
How much do you need? I wouldn't recommend more than ninety days, but probably thirty to sixty would be more my recommendation. But it's been there a year now, and neighbors don't like it.
I know.
Let's kind of, any questions or concerns for?
I would, I would like to see that at thirty days, do you think you can get?
Well, if you want to be happy, so now after thirty days, what happens?
And if you all could get a meeting on the books tonight before you leave, just to make sure you guys can meet and get this hashed out quickly.
And there would have been somebody staying in the house.
Yeah.
That's, they were using it as a residence. But he used to live there before the fire. It was his address, too.
But not an owner.
No, she's the owner. Where the cops can't take him off, because that was his address before.
There's no utilities of that.
No, no, nothing. No, no gas nor like water. And it's been.
Total damage.
Yeah, yeah. We'll just back up. I mean, it could be clean, but I don't have money for that. I'm on social security, so.
Yeah, the living room, the dining room, and the bathroom were all okay. It was just kitchen. Except it doesn't have utilities in the bathroom anyway, so.
I mean, I don't want to look back on it really, so.
We've called the cops, and they will not remove the apartment.
I have to go through a division, but he's in jail right now, so.
I mean, with the seller, that's hard to do it. So it's thirty days.
Can they get the rezoning done in thirty days? Is that?
No, but the process has to start within thirty days. So if they bring me an application for a zoning change within thirty days, then that would meet the requirement. Or if they brought me an application to demolish it, you know, I'd give them the permit. But it's gotta be within thirty days, or if they decided to jump it onto the demo program, you know, where we help.
See, here's the problem. She is on social security.
That could be an option, too, but that would, anything that they decide to do has to start within the thirty days.
I'd like to see it done within thirty days and get a meeting on the books to get it kind of hashed out, but it's a hard thirty days. I mean, if the structure's been sitting that long.
Yeah.
And I've got a question. Initiating a rezoning doesn't start, doesn't stop this condemnation process? Because we're talking about the structure needs to come down.
Well, repaired or removed.
Repaired or removed. So initiating a rezoning is not going to start the repair or removal process. The repair or removal process has to start within the thirty days. That's what we're saying.
Yeah.
Well, they have to, they have to get the conformity before they can start the repair or removal. So they would have to give the zoning change first. So that process was, that would be, to me, part of the whole process.
Rezoning if the intent was to repair it?
Yes.
If the intent was to demolish it, then the rezoning wouldn't, wouldn't matter at this point in time, because the rezoning could happen after demolition.
In fact, it would run. The, the non-conforming use rule allows, demands it be removed or the zoning changed. So if they wanted to fix it up, unletting it, it has to have a renovation change. So they have to come in the paperwork for a zoning change within the thirty days. Any that starts the process. Once we start that process of rezoning, then we can start working it, repair it. But I don't know if they would get a rezoning. I would have to look at that pretty hard, because if you can't take a lot in the middle of an industrial block and change it to residential, it's kind of, it's kind of a hot thing, but.
But we have the demo program that could help them take it down.
But Jessica can't afford it. She's on social security. She can't afford to fix it, and she can't afford to demolish it. That's just the bottom line. And we would, we would try to like to sell it, but I don't know if that's gonna happen.
So.
I mean, I'm not gonna be, she has no way to do it. I cannot afford it. So. So it's gonna probably not be that. Yeah.
Well, if something happens in thirty days, then I'll put it out to bid. Have to get sheriff in there and get to any occupants out. I usually do that where we go into a building anyway, if it appears abandoned, because you never know what you're on into, isn't it?
And I'm not gonna kid nobody. She can't afford it.
Are you the only one on the house, then? Because you guys said the person who's living there.
I own the house. He's my ex-boyfriend, and he's pretty much a PLS, and he's in jail now, so.
You know, what I'm asking is, from law enforcement's standpoint, you said you can't get him out because his name is on the house.
No, because he had mail coming to the house if he was fired, or I guess he's still.
He lived there. That was his residence.
A third coward, then. And I told him to leave, because I need to do something. I had some other guy that wanted to go in there first. He stayed in the living room and dining room. He went, he had a bike, so he didn't go inside. He was injured, so.
It's a squatter.
Basically, he has some rights. That's right, but.
Okay.
Thirty days would give you time to get something started. What you need to do if it's been over a year. You know, it's a soul.
And they need to do all that, or they're gonna have to rezon it.
Rezon it.
Okay, I feel bad if they purchase it. I mean, the bottom line is it's gonna be here. Okay, any questions? And we'll close the public hearing.
Okay, so this one here, 2023-2157.
So then after thirty days, the cops can make him leave?
No, I think after, when we just, if, if, if we ever put it up to demolition, then that's the time of us to explore illegal arts being in the building.
Can we request, can there be kind of a joint meeting or a meeting away from the city commission that you would agree to come to? And you guys can kind of sort out all your options and the timelines for getting all this.
This is okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I choose here.
I get it.
Talk to him about the squatter.
Well, he's in jail now, so hopefully gonna be there for a while, which, whatever, but.
Yeah, we.
Okay.
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 We'll talk later, man.
Okay, you want me to get ahold of you or you can send me a letter?
I'll be sure.
And that way I can look at my schedule on the dogs.
I'll call you tomorrow.
Okay, I'll be at work.
Okay, we set a thirty day, or zero days on this. We need to change that thirty day. On 2023, is that 2157?
Are we out of public hearing?
Yeah.
I move to approve Resolution 2023-2157 amended with thirty days. Second.
Been moved by Commissioner Hutchinson, seconded by Commissioner Belden to approve Resolution 2023-2157, allowing thirty days. Any discussion? If not, those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Move on to public hearing for 11003 Valley.
This one is the same way, slowly deteriorating over the years. We've done a pretty major nuisance abatement on it a couple of years ago, and it just has gotten worse since then. And I notice the building's falling apart, the front porch can't walk on, the windows, it's unsecure, and back taxes for several years. So I recommend zero days on this one, too. You know, the public hearing. I don't know if anybody's here on this one. I don't think so.
Any comments? We'll close the public hearing.
Commissioner, could you please open the public hearing? Because Bruno's not really opening it. You'll need to open.
I thought I did.
We, we need you to make that informal statement.
You can now open the public hearing.
Wait, yeah.
I thought I did before this one. Anyway, that meant, open the public hearing on 1003 Valley. No comments. We'll close the public hearing on 1003 Valley.
I'm moving to approve Resolution 2023-2158. Second.
Been moved by Commissioner Hutchinson, seconded by Commissioner Belden to approve Resolution 2023-2158. Any questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We'll open the public hearing on 2029 West First Street.
Yeah, this one here is Eric Ford, he's here. I talked to him briefly before the meeting, and I'm not sure what you're, what you wanted on this one. However, you want to come up? We talked about 504 East 10th. We're gonna talk about 229 West First.
229 West First, we just got the top just a little bit. I've had a lot of health problems, and I've fed up. They tweaked my pacemaker just the other day. I'm starting to feel a lot better now since we've done that thing. I apologize for that. I didn't plan on a lot of things happening, but anyhow, I, I will work with him on that. I think this one is one that we want to keep and redo. You know, my son's a general contractor. He's, I'm gonna have him look it over and everything. So I would ask for a little more time, maybe if I could get a month or two to have him come up and look it over and see what all we need to do to that place. But I've got a person that's interested in the place. I think he may, I'm not sure if he wants to go ahead and take it down, but I will go in there and clean up the place and make it safe and everything at this time, as soon as I can get in there. And so that place, I think we'll want to keep, and I will do it. And as you know, I owned that for a while, and I have kept low rental. People in there, people that basically help keep them off the street and that sort of thing. There is electricity to the place. There's also water and sewer to the place, so forth. So it can be lived in if they have to. It's not anything fancy by any means. Bruno pointed out to me that there was a place in the basement where there's brick foundation that is starting to pull out a little bit, and I'll go in there. I've got concrete blocks, and also we'll, you know, shore that up a little bit. There's a place upstairs where a tree limb has come through the roof a little bit, and so we'll have to patch that roof and things like that. The front door, people had broke into it, they broke into the back door, and so on. We're expecting a new door on the forelungs. Again, that on the back was a brand new door a couple of years ago, so that bothers me a lot. But in that neighborhood, it's, you know, it's not, sometimes you can't control things like that if nobody's living there. And so if we keep it, we'll have it rented, because, but I'm not sure. I don't want to keep it. My son and I don't want to keep it. We'll fix it up enough where it's livable, and we'll either fettle it or something else. But I think the gentleman that I'm talking to now wants to buy the place, I think he's either going to put up a building there for his business, or he's going to do something else with it. Mr. Raybine and I talked about possibly making an RV place there or something like that, and if we clean that up and everything, there is, like we said, there's sewer and outlet there. Right now, with the activities going on up in Republic County and so forth, and there may be a possibility of that, that would bring in some income. And once you got it established, that would be another thing that we could sell. But we're, I'm not, a son of four, I don't want to be tied down with that. Because after what's happened to me the last six months, I'm not gonna be tied down. It's not that I don't like the community, and I'm I'm now finally feeling like I can work with the city hall. And so it's not that. It's just that my health problems and everything. I've got a camper sitting out home now, first you put camper, I haven't been able to use.
So you think he can come to these decisions within that thirty days?
So I, I think we can come to a decision where we, we can work together, where I can come to a decision that I can get a building permit or something with you. And we can go from there, because I think it'll come to a building permit at that point.
Thirty days.
So thirty days. I know you want to try to get something solidified. Same way with that other property on 10th Street.
That's next.
And that's next. So let's take care of this one, and then we'll come back.
Any other comments from the public hearing? If not, we'll close the public hearing on 229 West First Street. We need to change for a resolution.
No, it should, it should say thirty days.
It has to say thirty days. Okay.
I move to approve Resolution 2023-2159. Second.
Yeah.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hutchinson, seconded by Commissioner Jackson to approve Resolution 2023-2159. Any comments? Not those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Move on to public hearing on 504 East 10th Street. We'll open the public hearing on 504 East 10th.
This one was also owned by Eric Ford. He shared a comment on it, and this one also gave a thirty day deal, and I think it's in a little worse shape than the other one, and he kind of knows it, but you got any questions?
Yes, I've looked it down and talked it over with my son, and he, he had looked at it earlier after we bought the place. And he agreed that that was something that we really had something to do with. I had planned on taking it down this summer. I wanted it down by fall, but as I said, things done went haywire, starting I guess it's February when I started looking at it. I've got two stents put over here, I have two stents put over here. I've had pacemaker fitting over here, had pacemaker taken out of here, had sephs and a whole bunch of things, and I about lost it there on time with that. About carried and all that. But anyway, make a long story short, I will go along with the thirty days, and at that time, I want to explore the options that we have Mr. Raybine and my son, and between the two of us, or three of us, I guess, we will make a decision what we're gonna do with this place in thirty days also. If that's okay with you all.
Any questions?
This, this place, you said that you had wanted already to take it down, but there are tenants on this property.
There are no tenants in this property.
Not in this one, okay.
No, no, we, we put them up one time ago.
Okay.
It was one of those places, sometimes during the winter time, people would sneak in there to get out of the weather, something like that, but that's all.
It sits on a hill. I'm sorry.
It's on, yeah, it's sitting on a hill, it would be a nice place for somebody to go in and have a tri-level type of thing and it's wide lot and everything, but and and they could come up on paved alley up here for a garage, there is a garage up there, it has door a one of those doors on the back where you get into, but but there's trees have grown a little bit, and I'll cut those out, I mean, I'll clean it up, but whenever I get in the shape where I can do that, but right now I'm on a ten pound limit and hot. But I got in big trouble because I did go back to the doctor when I wasn't too. I was feeling a little funny and they found out I was whatever they call it, I was going up and down. And anyhow, they tweaked my thing, my being, I'm starting to feel a lot better, so. But I'm still not supposed to do that, you know, life gets very upset when you do that. So.
So we're in.
On a short leash.
Okay, any other questions there? We'll close the public hearing on five oh four East Ten.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty three dash twenty one sixty.
Second.
Been moved by Commissioner Jackson, seconded by Commissioner Hutchinson to approve resolution twenty twenty three twenty one sixty. Any discussion? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We'll now open the public hearing on seven twenty State Street.
This one here is I've been getting complaints on it for a while, it's got a pretty significant lobbying influence on the neighborhood. I've been in it at the at the request of, I believe, occupants of the building. And that's when I decided it's not very habitable, it's a condition. And my conditions report from the, I think it was the May fifth meeting, will stand as the record, and I also got other photos of this inside now. But with that, and this is why I recommend sixty days, because we got occupants in this one, and we've also got a manager, the owner has returned the letter, signed, but I had never talked to the owner. Only Vicki in the office, so with that, I'll let whoever wants to go first.
My name is uh, I'm twenty one years old, I have uh I have autism and MR, and I would like to have my mother speak on my behalf, which is on the cell phone over here, so Bruno can see that cell phone, that'd be great.
I don't do that.
I can't turn it off.
Okay. All right, thinking. Turn on.
Jessica.
Jessica, this is Bruno.
Hello.
All right, I'm gonna put you toward the commissioner so they can see you, okay?
Okay.
All right, say peace.
Um, my son rented the property for me because I was coming down from Nebraska. Vicky Khan signed my son Sean Cassidy, who's not even eighteen yet. And Damian Welch, the property, went to own. She did not give them a lease, she gave them a rented agreement. My son and Sean told her that they had autism and Lucas had MR. I know that he is legally allowed to sign paperwork, but he told her that he had problems and he easily left. She brought a bed in the house for him before I got there, she brought a stove and a refrigerator. When I came down from my cousin's house, I'm saying my cousin's is right. I come down there and she chased me up the stairs with my chihuahua, saying that I'm not on the lease, I'm not allowed to live there. We had to call RJ from the police station because she said if you're not on the lease, you're not allowed to live there. I was going to be.
I'm gonna, ma'am.
Hold on, we gotta cut you.
Ma'am.
No, no, don't.
No, no, don't, don't cut it off. Ma'am, uh hey, my name's Justin Farrell, I'm the city attorney. This issue that you guys are talking about is is separate from the condemnation of the building. Um what, yeah, what your issue is, is probably something you need to take up with Ms. Khan, it's it it really has nothing to do with the city stuff. I I don't want you to feel like you're talking to everybody and nothing gets done, because it's nothing they can do.
I know that you guys are condemning it, that's fine, but can you please give us like sixty days because we're trying to buy the lot, Brian Brandon's grandmother's lot across from Steve's family.
Okay, you you I, yeah, that that's up to Bruno, I just didn't want you to to talk about what was going on and then I say, you know, when you were done, say, oh, we can't do anything about that. So that that's why I cut you off on that.
Okay.
Okay, no, no, you're fine.
And I think the resolution is for sixty days.
It is.
What?
It our resolution recommends sixty days.
Okay. If we can have sixty days, that would be great.
But, so, Mr. Tripp was a legal occupant of the residence.
Yes, and she sent him the paperwork without his legal name on it. She never contacted us.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what's setting her, Bruno sent her a fine because the house was not inhabitable, we moved in, we spent a lot of money on that.
Well, you, okay, and so you had asked for sixty days, that's what he's actually recommending, so.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Any other comments?
Yes, I'm I'm saying with you. All right, Vicki's gonna come up and uh turn back in to you.
So we're just gonna talk about the property, not whatever that situation is.
That's correct. I uh, the property of, as the roof doesn't leak, it has all new windows on the top floor. I've got bills here that show that I put in two new doors. We we did the gas line, we did all the water lines. In two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, I and twenty, I have put over five thousand dollars in repairs on this place. And I was going to continue to do so, the pandemic, you know, made it so I didn't get rent for a couple of years. Then I'm, we just got people in there, but just, I need to be able to get in there to do more repairs and I can't right now.
Bruno, could you detail for us the, I, it's just been a while, can you detail for us all of the issues that you most recently observed and what dates those were, around what dates those were?
Well, the one thing that a house has to have is a deal to keep the weather out, and when you got missing siding and holes into the stud cavity, that is a code violation because it has to keep the weather out. That's one thing, you can see that from all over the outside. When I went inside, and I've been in a couple of times, because they called me up, they didn't have any hot hot water, and so I went in there. And I didn't, I saw very few new pipes, but one thing I did notice on the main floor, the oak flooring had looked like somebody shot with a shotgun. And I went downstairs and looked in the 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 Joyce and the and the underlayment, the subfloor and the finished floor, I don't know what, I assume it was term on damage. But they had a baby in there and crib and everything, and I I told them, I said, I don't know if I would want to be in this floor.
Do you know what date that was, like what year that was?
Uh it was this year.
This year.
It was this year, I, my con, my original report, conditions report, had about four or five pictures, and I I thought those were kind of the worst of it. But I probably got three dozen pictures, but you gotta be careful how many pictures you put in the commission package.
Sure.
But uh, anyway, that, yeah, it's I consider, I don't, I I like with any renter that calls me to complain about the conditions of the building, the first thing I tell them is, you're taking a big risk if I think it's uninhabitable and you're gonna be looking for a new place to live, or you're gonna be debating with your man landlord or your manager.
Do you know how about how many renters you've had that have called in and complained about this property?
Uh we've had petitions, we've gotten a petition from the neighbors.
But from the renters that have invited you in, like to visit?
I'm sorry.
How many groups of renters have invited you in?
Just one, just this latest one.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Bruno, what about the foundation, seemed to be in that original room?
Well, it's one of them typical limestone foundations that, you know, after about a hundred years, they they need some attention. You gotta re-thack one of them or I didn't notice any particularly ready to fail on Mr. Ford's property. He's got that one on First Street, that bowling brick deal we talked about.
Oh, yeah.
But uh
Any other questions?
Vicki, with sixty days, would be enough time to figure out what still needs to be.
Yeah, I need to contact a lawyer and take care of the situation. Yeah, because I've served notices and it was not a rental, it, we have a rental application, but nothing that, and then I've served eviction notices, but they won't leave.
Any other comments, questions?
More public comments on this subject?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Tracy Seider, I live at three oh nine West Eighth Street, right next door to this house. And I've lived there for twenty years. This house for the last ten to eleven years has been a huge point of contention for us because you, like Bruno said, you can see the inside from the outside, no matter who moves in there, there's always trouble. There is so much police involvement, my opinion on that is that this house is so dilapidated, and yes, I have been inside it, it is so dilapidated that the people that move in are unable to keep up with the repairs and the, I believe Vicki is the rental manager, not the owner. Um, the owner lives out of state. And I've spoken with Vicki over and over and over, and the owner is very unwilling to dump money into it, so if there's not rent coming in, there's no repairs being made. This house is a huge danger to people that live in it, the hole through the floor, I've walked through that house, I don't know how people haven't fallen through the floor already. We've had farm pigs in there, we've had, um, yes, living in the house, never let outside, the flooring is ruined. We, last year, there was um, a couple living in there that I don't know what they were cooking in the garage, but I have pictures of a pipe vented out the window toward our house to vent whatever was being cooked. It is a danger to my family, it is a danger to the people that live in it, it is a, an eyesore. This is unfair to anyone around. There have been, last year, those people were evicted and moved out the end of March. And by the middle of April, there were rats on my front porch pouring out of the basement. Something needs to be done with this house. It is a disaster, it is unsafe. And if there's a baby in a crib in there, somebody else needs to be going to visit. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tricia Chamberlain, I live at three eleven West Eighth, two doors from, on the other side of Tracy. Um, and I agree with everything she said, I lived in my house for twenty two years. I think the rats were the kind of the end of it for me, and I was the one that kind of got the petition, started to get the place condemned last year and the neighbors that I went to, all of them were more than willing to sign in, so it needs to be doored down. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
If there are no, no other comments, we'll close the public hearing on seven twenty State.
Well, this one, I had the sixty days on there already, because I made the fact we need more time to work out what, how they can solve this problem, so. And I guess everybody's okay with the sixty day deal, so we go sixty days. See what happens when we put in the next sixty days.
I would move to approve resolution twenty twenty three dash twenty one sixty one, second.
Been moved by Commissioner Beldon, seconded by Commissioner Hutchinson to approve resolution twenty twenty three twenty one sixty one. Any discussion? Not those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Get it for me.
Yes. Thank you. Move on to
Thank you, guys.
Minutes of the duty twenty first meeting.
Would move to through the minutes of June twenty first twenty two.
Been moved by Commissioner Beldon, seconded by Commissioner Jackson, approved in minutes of June twenty first twenty twenty three meeting. Any comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Move on to appropriation ordinance number twelve.
To approve appropriations ordinance number twelve, second.
Been moved by Commissioner Jackson, seconded by Commissioner Hutchinson to appro- to approve appropriation ordinance number twelve. Any discussion? If not, those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Bids for demolition, five thirty West Eleventh Street.
Tricia, this has been kind of an interesting project to try to bid out demolition on, so we could evade all the frivolous asbestos that was surveyed by ISI Environmental and then solicited bids. We were expecting about four to five bids on this project based on the attendance at the pre-bid meeting and the questions that we received. We ended up with two bids, in-line construction did attend the pre-bid meeting as required by the bid specification, Smith Construction did not. However, Smith Construction was unaware that there was a pre-bid meeting as they did not see the advertisement until later. Uh we had used a list of demolition contractors that had worked in Portia previously and had advertised in the blade on the website and then had sent a targeted um email to everyone whose email address we had on file, which we did not have Smith Construction's email address on that list, we do now. So the whole purpose of having the pre-bid meeting was to ensure that each of the bidders went to the site and saw the site and evaluated it without providing a bid sight unseen. Uh both bidders did do that, we did confirm, in fact. Um, one of the bidders that went in did discover additional frivolous asbestos, as I did some of the um investigations, so we may still have some more to remove and I need to get ahold of ISI Environmental to verify that and see what that, what that's gonna take. Um additionally, we just got information, Bruno did a great job helping me out, kind of tried to coordinate with some rules and regulations with KDHE and our local landfill. And the um KDHE says that we can dispose of the concrete rubble with the non-frivolous asbestos fortile impact. But the local landfill has to follow their operating procedure, which says if that's the case, then we're responsible to dig a new pit to put that in. Which is new information that just arrived on my desk, I have about ten after five this afternoon, so I've not had a chance to visit with um Mr. Hake out there at the landfill to find out what that cost would be. We did, however, request an add alternate bid from each of the demolition contractors, so the base bid was dispose of the building as if the fortile is still attached to the concrete, well, what would that cost? Then the add alternate is, how would your bid change if if the fortile was removed before you disposed of that? I have um a number to dispose of that fortile that we received, I don't want to disclose it because we have to bid that out. Um but it it would have an additional cost to it as well. So I kind of felt we don't have all the answers yet, we do have some bids, um we've got the numbers in front of you. Would love to hear from you if you would like to let me get the answers to the rest of these questions first before making a decision, or if you're ready to make a decision tonight. If we make a decision tonight, we have to take the add alternate, and then I need to verify from those contractors whether their number included them removing it or whether it was removed by others, the directive was to remove, have it removed by others, but I would need to verify that. Because the cloud counting transfer stations operating procedure says that we would have to dig a new pit, and if that asbestos comes to them, it has to be separated. Does that make sense? And the costs of digging it, if we don't know, we don't know what that would be. Go with tabling this one until next meeting.
How long are these bids good for?
We we asked to withhold them for for thirty days from the time of the bid, we anticipated that we would be able to have some action on this, let them know by tomorrow what the action was, because we felt pretty confident going into it, but now with this information, I don't feel confident asking you to make a decision tonight. So I would just email them both and let them know the situation, then we'll put it back on the next one, and then if they want to choose to withdraw the bid, they can, if they want to say that their bid is so good, they can. I make a motion to um table uh this bid for demolition until our next, our study session for budget.
uh, this bid for demolition until our next our study session for budget.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hutchinson, seconded by Commissioner Veldman to table the bids for eight thirty West Eleventh Street until budget meeting.
Do you want to do that? I think as our first budget study session on the Monday, separate from regular meeting? You want to table it to that or do you want to table it for regular meeting on the Wednesday after?
Oh, when is it? That regular meeting?
Any other discussion? If not, those in favor say aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Move on to donation of utility vehicle to downtown beautification.
Okay, Mr. We are, um, still struggling to fill the downtown groundskeeper position that is a city employee that is supervised by the Broadway Plaza Coordinator in conjunction with supervision of maintenance of the plaza. Um, so volunteers, including Marsha, have been helping out with watering the flowers. The, uh, high school football team came out last Friday morning and pulled a lot of weeds downtown. So everything looks looked nice going into the weekend, which we really appreciated. Um, this John Dear Gator Utility Vehicle was acquired in two thousand and two, and it had some restrictions on that. It was specifically, uh, acquired for the hazmat team. Um, it's no longer needed by the hazmat team. It's no longer needed by Fire EMS. So we're able to stir off the graphics and the, uh, lights. It does have some mechanical issues. We can just get word that the tires will be replaced tomorrow morning. Uh, we did replace the watering pump, uh, so that it it can work. So I think still waiting on a switch. I'm not sure. Is that right? An on-off switch. So we use an alligator clips on the battery to make it make it operate right now. Having that gator to be able to water the flowers makes watering much, much easier. Um, since the downtown beautification committee had the flowers placed downtown, uh, our local businesses have been used to having somebody water them for them. It worked really well, and we're fully staffed with downtown groundskeepers. It has not worked well for the last year, not having, uh, full staff downtown groundskeepers. So, um, anyway, we have the city contractors with Cloud Corp for management of the plaza that includes the oversight of this, um, which the groundskeepers are city employees, so they're covered by our insurance to be able to drive the gator. Um, if the volunteers from the downtown beautification committee or the Broadway Plaza Coordinator, executive director decides to drive this to help out, it's technically a violation of our insurance. So we had a couple of options. We could put them on the payroll as part-time ground downtown groundskeepers. Um, or we could donate the gator to them and let them take care of storage and maintenance of the gator and then be able to use it for whoever they need to help out with the watering downtown. So recommendation at this point in time is to go ahead and and donate it to the downtown beautification committee to allow them to take care of of our pots downtown. Um, it does save us a little bit of storage. Since we tore down the greenhouse and the blue house downtown, the gator's now being stored at the fire department. There's not really room inside the base to store them, so it's being stored outside. Um, and I know it's caused issues with some sap, a little bit sticky seeds and sticky steering wheels when we go to use it. So it requires a little bit of extra cleaning there, but that's kind of the issue that we're facing right now. But try and find a way to comply with the insurance requirements, not violating that, and still be able to get things done with it, if we're willing to do the work.
Where will it be stored now?
During the watering season, we'll store it behind Brett's. And Bill, Brett, will do maintenance on it. And then during the winter months, we'll store it in old city shop building that I own, so on Fifth Street. So it'll be indoors during the winter. And Bill is, I guess, agreed to do maintenance on it, or so.
Does the city employees still drive it if it belongs to the beautification?
They want to volunteer to water. We probably love it.
Yeah, because it was one way and not the other. Sometimes in the city, we've got a few more rules to follow, so we definitely couldn't do that. But that would be up to you guys. I I would discourage it if they were on city time, but if they were off city time and not doing it as a city employee, then that would be, that the downtown beautification would be discretion.
And we'll carry my building insurance on it.
The city's gonna make sure it's working properly before it gets to go. We have done as much maintenance to get it to not sound clunky and grindy as it possibly can. And the thought process is that something is occurring with the drive chain that we're not able to fix. But there are two flat tires, and we are replacing all of the tires and the pumps and the water strayer do work.
I would move to donate the John Dear Gator Utility Vehicle to the downtown beautification committee for the purpose of maintaining the downtown landscape. Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Veldman, seconded by Commissioner Hutchinson to donate the John Dear Gator Utility Vehicle to the downtown beautification committee for the purpose of maintaining the downtown landscape. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor say aye. And I'm going to stay, stay. Moving on, uh, the manager's report.
Tricia, short report, I guess, just thank you everybody that helped out with the fireworks display in our fire department helped out a lot with that. Thanks for everybody for keeping us, um, safe and healthy here in town over the holiday weekend. Did also want to comment the, um, occupants of seven ten, seven twenty State Street that were here today did turn in a request today to purchase a couple of the lots that are owned by the Concordia Land Bank. Um, it was too late to get it on the agenda here for today. We need to kind of process that. They did make an offer worth a dollar amount, so we need to see that, what that is compared to what the assessed valuation is to be able to give you that information. Um, so we'll visit with them further and make sure we know what that offer is. These would be the lots on Second Street where we tore down the houses several years ago. Um, and I think it would be a good option for them to be able to have a home there, but we can check with Bruno to make sure that the type of housing that they want to put on there works in the zoning, works for the floodplain regulations and make sure you have a lot of information to be able to make that decision. So we'll put that on the agenda here for the next time. What was the address? You know, it's the the occupants of seven twenty State Street that are here, and I don't remember that's exactly. I I want to say the four hundred block of East Second Street. I want to say that, but I'm not sure if you remember, no.
It's east of the Second Street or Oak Bar. I can't think of it. Four or five hundred block east.
I think it's a four hundred block and it's on.
There's about a half block of empty lots there, and I think the city owns two or three.
Two of them.
Okay. Thank you.
So we'll bring up before you go to Second Street.
Staff report.
I just can say real quick, I don't have much of an update for the cloud village. Repair is being done, um, with the grant. Um, just been doing some cabinets and I'll report next time when I know a little bit more about. I think he started the concrete for the side, the sidewalks. Maybe last week, or he was going to. I haven't heard if he did. So I'll just bring back a little bit more information next time.
Any other stat?
I just want to thank the commissioners that showed up to the open house. I thought it went really well.
I want to thank Bruno. I know this is a lot of work, and I know it takes a lot of time, and it's not the most fun job to do, but I really appreciate it because this really helps us on our mission to have uh, beautification and eliminating light within the city. Um, so I really appreciate the work that you've done and appreciate everything everyone did for the fireworks display and to make Fourth of July Hood Park neighborhood. You know, as always, does a great job. So it's a nice little, uh, place to visit on Fourth of July, and so appreciate everything everybody's been.
Well, I I too want to thank people for the fireworks that were. He went to a lot of work and a lot of expense to give us a good program, so. And I appreciate Bruno to driving around, looking at these houses. Made me see a few more need to be taken down too, so. Any other comments?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. By Commissioner Hutchinson. Those in favor say aye.